The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, May 24, 2016. It is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight humbly asking that you bless this council. We come to you, Heavenly Father Jesus, with praise and thanksgiving on our hearts and minds. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the many staff members that we have, for the city council that you've given us, and we thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for all the things that they do that ensures our health and safety. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, because we know that you are the great provider and that you do look down upon us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, because we can come to you and we can stand in this building and thank you and praise and worship you. Tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, I just ask that you touch each council member, each staff member, and all those, Heavenly Father Jesus, that's presenting something to this council, that each and every one presents it in a manner, Heavenly Father Jesus, that would best serve this city. We thank you for this wonderful day, and we ask that you bless it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict on any interest of a scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're starting off with Item 1.1, proclaiming June 2016 as Disability Awareness Month. And may I have those representing the Society for Disability to come forward? This is, what, the sixth?
Sixth year.
Yeah, sixth year of this. This is amazing that it is continuing, and some people said it wouldn't be done. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Disability Awareness Month, June 2016, whereas the City Council of the City of Riverbank have recognized healthy communities as a priority, and whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of age, gender, race, or social status, and the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but it is an integral part of the human spirit, and whereas increasing public awareness about diverse abilities is vital to fighting the stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being, and whereas there are an estimated 4,500,000 people with disability in the state of California and over 68,800 over the age of five with disabilities in Stanislaus County, and whereas with the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience a disability personally or through a family member, whereas the City of Riverbank wants to celebrate and recognize people with different abilities, and whereas people with different abilities are independent, productive, and part of the community, and education, understanding, access, engagement, and relationships are important components of a connected, livable, and healthy community, and communities thrive when residents appreciate the unique gifts inside people who have all abilities. By developing relationships with our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone participates and is a valued member, and the Society for Disabilities will commemorate June 16th and each June thereafter as Disability Awareness Month. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that June 2016 is Disability Awareness Month within the City of Riverbank, and we urge all citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disabilities. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Richard. And we couldn't have done this without Richard. He started six years ago, and he started really advocating on behalf of people with disabilities for our organization, and we are here to give you an award today, and it's for Distinguished Volunteer of the Year for 2015 and for outstanding vision, dedication, and commitment to people with disabilities. Thank you for advocating and creating awareness for Disability Awareness Month. Your efforts enhance the quality of people with disabilities within the Central Valley.
I don't think that went through your board. I'm the board president. They didn't go through it. That's nothing. But, yeah, let's take a break. Come on up.
And this is Carolyn, and this is Anthony.
And thank you very much.
She's someone who sent this in, so thank you.
Thank you. And do you have any words to say other than that? No?
I think you read it all.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, everybody.
We're recognizing older Americans with Older Americans Month, whereas the City of Riverbank is a thriving community which includes older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, people such as Fast Eddie. Fast Eddie, why don't you come on up here? You're not very fast right now. Riverbank is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives in a community of their choice for as long as possible. Since 1965, the Older Americans Act has provided services that help older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and health care systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's most basic functions, such as bathing or preparing meals, whereas these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders. We recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to the others. Our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activities, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and sharing community members of all ages benefits from the contributions and experiences of older adults. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim May 2016 to be the Older American Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contributed to our community. Signed today by the City Council. This is for the Older American Month. Sir?
Eddie, turn around.
Turn around. Turn around. And you have to speak for about 10 minutes after this one. I know. I shouldn't have even offered that. In honor of Older American Month, the City of Riverbank recognizes Mr. Edward Jones, AKA Fast Eddie, whose enthusiasm for life and his love of Riverbank is contagious. Eddie's interest in the well-being of our community, as shown by his attendance at city council meetings and other local events, makes him a truly remarkable older American. I just dropped the older Americans. Gee.
I could have picked that up.
I'm sure, but you wouldn't be able to get back up. Want to say something?
Oh, Mayor?
Yeah?
Sure. Look at him shaking like a priest.
Smile.
Smile.
Okay, and there you go. Want to say something, you can?
For you that don't know me, God bless you. This is something I had never anticipated on something like this. I want to thank you. Thank you all very, very much. And where's my hanky? But anyhow, I'll keep it aside. Thank you very much for this. This is quite an honor, I realize. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Continuing on with the meeting. Item 2, Public Comment. No action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I have two things. First of all, the water bills. What a neat deal. I had a lady come running to my house. She had a $600 bill beating on my door. You have to do something. You have to do something. And a little bit later, another gentleman, he had one for $6,000 and thought that he bought the new meter. So anyhow, I came down to the City Hall South, and what a pleasant surprise. First of all, everybody left very happy because they realized that that wasn't the bill they had to pay. Secondly, they were treated very nicely by the staff there. There was probably 20 people when I came, and they immediately said, yes, we made a mistake, and yes, we can print you out a new bill, and if not, we will send it to you, and everything will be fine, and so on. And people left very happy. I mean, it's one way to make people happy, send them a big bill and then tell them they don't have to pay it. So I thought the city handled it very well when the bills did come and explained the problem and so on and so forth. It was unfortunate, but it worked out, and like I say, for a while, people are very happy. I have another challenge for the city and the city council. The Corps of Engineers has pretty much evicted the Riverbank Estates people from, that's what they call their house down at the river, evicted them from the river, and they've come into the city, and in some cases, they were irrigating the flower beds and some of them around the Housing Authority, which scared some of the people there because there was no bathroom that they could go to. So I would suggest that we might look into a porta potty. It could be situated at Stanislaus and Third, which is that parking lot there. They have a tree, a couple of trees around it. It's right, butts up against the Housing Authority office, and it would be good not only for the homeless people, but for visitors. There's no place to go otherwise, except it sues bathroom out here, and it's a bother to people, and it makes people uneasy, and it makes the needy people feel uneasy. So I suggest putting it there. If there's not money to pay for it from the city, then maybe they could find out what the cost would be, and it could be split among the charitable groups, St. Vincent Paul, Christian Food Sharing, maybe the Assembly of God, maybe the Housing Authority, so that we get something there. But I think there's a need for some public restroom within the city that could be used at all times. Hopefully, it wouldn't be abused. It wouldn't turn out to be a low-rent place to stay the night, but anyhow, I think something needs to be done there, and every so often, we flush out the homeless from the river, and we run into this problem. We've run into it before, so if maybe it could be looked into, maybe some prices determined, and again, if the city couldn't fund it, maybe there's some way that a consortium of charities could fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Mayor, Board of Governors, my name is Edward Jones. Fast Eddie, everybody knows that now. My question mainly is to Gail. The farmer's market is a splendid thing, but we don't have many people participating in the farmer's market. The city's got nothing to do with that, I realize that. But how about the, uh, uh, help me?
Flea market.
Flea market. How about a flea market? Is the city liable, or can the city sponsor a flea market in its own property somewhere? If it's possible, I would know, because I'd like to participate in it, and I know there'd be a few others I would like to participate in.
Any other further public comments? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council. Does staff have any comments?
One is appreciate Mr. McCruchy's comments about how the water billing situation was handled, and just want to give my hats off to the finance staff, who at that time, Donnie Morrell handled this in Maricela's absence, and just they did everything possible to correct the situation once it became apparent. So I want to compliment the staff and thank the community's understanding for that. In regards to the flea market proposal, I believe that Kiwanis did that last summer, and that'd probably be something that would be best taken on by a nonprofit group and invite other members of the public or other community groups to participate in, and that is something that has been done. So I'm not sure how successful it's been, or whether or not they wanted to work with the chamber to have something in combination. So if there's nothing that specifically prohibits it, but I do think that's something best handled by a nonprofit group.
We'll look into that and see if there's something that can be done to facilitate it. Item 3, Consent Calendar, consisting of Item 3A, Wave Readings; 3B, Approval of May 10th, 2016 City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes; LRA Item 3C, Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Tolling Agreement between Watson Road, Holding Corporation, DBA, Stuart B. Milner and Associates, and the City of Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of these items for discussion? Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the items on the consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council for recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for the consent calendar.
Council Authority Member Cruz.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Campbell.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Item 5, Public Hearing. Public hearing to adopt resolution of formation establishing Community Facilities District Number 2016-1, Public Services, call and declares results of a special landowner election, and introduce an ordinance authorizing the levy of a special tax within the boundaries of CFD 2016-1.
Mayor, oh.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just, Mayor, members of the City Council, we have a representative from Welldan here this evening, Susanna Medina, who's been working with the city through the development and ultimate implementation of the Community Facilities District, who provided an overview to the council and the community of a couple of the key steps leading up to tonight and what to anticipate as this item proceeds.
Good evening, council members and city staff and members of the public. This is my second time here presenting to you. I'm just going to go over briefly what was discussed at the last council meeting, which was the intent meeting, but let me go back and introduce myself again. My name is Susanna Medina from Welldan Financial Services. I'm one of the project managers there. I've been in the industry for 11 years, and that has encompassed all facets of district administration, including levy calculations, disclosures, delinquency management, et cetera. And for the last five years, I've been focusing on district formations, including landscaping and lighting districts, CFDs, and PBids. So just to give a brief overview for anybody, to bring everybody up to, you know, speed on what happened on the last council meeting, we gave a little bit of a background on the Prop 13 and what led to the Community Facilities Act of 1982. Basically, in 1978, Prop 13 limited the amount of revenue that cities could collect because property values were rolled back, and then you could only increase property values by 2% a year. Because of that, cities had limited resources in order to fund public improvements and public services. In 1982, the Community Facilities Act was created in order to fund special purpose services. And then on April 12 of 2016, we had our first council meeting, and City Council approved a resolution declaring its intention to establish Community Facilities District Number 2016-1, Public Services, and set May 24, 2016, as the date of the public hearing. The purpose of the CFD is to mitigate the impact of new development, and it's basically to maintain the current level of service. The services that are going to be funded through the CFD are police services, park maintenance, street maintenance, drainage maintenance, and landscaping maintenance. And to give an overview again of the budget and the amounts, of the $5,575, 1516 budget, we reduced it by 25% to account for ad valorem and sales tax revenues. That was spread to all the properties in the city to see how much each kind of property classification is costing the city to provide for the various services. After a series of analysis, it was determined that detached, single-family residential property costs $580 per year, and attached residential property costs $348 a year in order to maintain the various services that the CFD is going to fund. We also did an analysis of the population based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics. There's around 3.42 people per household in the City of Riverbank. So based on the development that's coming in, 352 units, that's around 1,197 people, which would impact the services of the city. This is just a brief overview of the boundaries of the CFD. The CFD can annex properties in the future if there's new development coming in. Now, after the intent meeting, the city clerk did receive signed consent from 100% of the landowners within the proposed CFD to shorten the timeframe of the CFD formation, which would allow the election to be conducted at the same day as a public hearing, which would be today. And the city clerk received confirmation that there are less than 12 registered voters within the proposed CFD, and that allows for a landowner vote instead of a registered voter vote. So as such, ballots were mailed to the landowners within the proposed CFD and were due to the city clerk by the time of the public hearing today on May 24. On top of that, we also were required to send notice to the property owners of the public hearing, so that was sent at the same time as the ballots. This is just an overview of the owners that are within the boundaries of the CFD. Each owner was allocated one vote per every acre or portion of an acre. There's a total of 60 eligible votes in the CFD. As far as the next steps, now the city council shall hold a public hearing to allow any interested persons to be heard on matters related to the proposed CFD, and then the city council can close the public hearing and adopt the resolution forming and establishing the CFD and the resolution calling a special election. Then the city clerk should declare the results of the election based on the ballots returned. Based on the ballots returned means if at least two-thirds of the votes received are in favor of the special tax ballot, then the resolution declaring the results and directing the recordation of the special tax lien shall be adopted, and the first reading of the ordinance levying the special tax shall take place. But if less than two-thirds of the votes received are in favor of the ballot measure, then the proceeding shall be abandoned for at least one year. And that's where we are right now. Sorry, I spoke very fast. I'm not a presenter. I'm a behind-the-desk and analytical math major, so.
Before we proceed to the public hearing, are there any questions from the council? Okay. At this time and place for the public, oh, this is the time and place for the public hearing relating to Communities Facilities District Number 2016-1, Public Services. This public hearing relates to the proposed formation of said district and calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of said district propositions regarding the annual levy of special taxes within the Community Service District.
Notice that the public hearing has been given in the form and manner as required by law.
At this time, it is time to take testimony from the public. I would request that each person who speaks gives his name and address and state whether he is the owner of the property located within the proposed boundaries of the Community Facilities District Number 2016, or a registered voter residing within the proposed boundaries of such district. This does not limit those outside the district from making public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at all? I would now ask staff to provide the final protest count of registered voters and owners, if any.
Who received six ballots, tolling 60 votes, 55 are yes, and five are no.
Before I formally close the hearing, are there any other property owners subject to the proposed special taxes who wish to file written protest? If so, they must file with the city clerk at this time. The public hearing is thereby closed. All right, at this time, I'm asking the city council to adopt a resolution of formation of the City of Riverbank establishing District Number 2016-1, Public Services.
I move the motion that we accept the, um, item 5.1 as stated.
A second.
Council Authority Member Cruz.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Campbell.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Okay, and is that it on that item, correct?
No, we have also to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, just bear with me on this.
It's not quite set forth on the agenda item. Usually, we would just, if you moved 5.1, that would encompass all of the items. This time, we have a little different script to follow, so bear with us for a second. I think we've adopted the first resolution. I recommend.
Do I have to adopt the calling a special election?
Yeah, and then introduce ordinance after that.
Okay. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Riverbank Community Facility District Number 2016-1, Public Services, propositions regarding establishment of an appropriations limit and the of an appropriations limit and the annual levy of a special tax within the Community Service District.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution of the city council of City of Riverbank calling a special elections and submitting the elector.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second of establishing, establishment of an appropriations limit and annual levy of special tax.
Council 30 member Cruz.
Yes.
Council 30 member Campbell.
Yes.
Council 30 member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Okay, so we declared the results, and then we have the ordinance. So that is now closed. Item 5.2, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, authorizing the first public hearing of a 2016 Community Development Block Grant Notice of Funding Available.
Sorry, can I interrupt?
There's a resolution declaring the results of this, of the election that has to be approved as well. If the city clerk could declare the results.
There are 55 votes in favor of the ballot and five that were not in favor opposed of it. So there is at least a two-thirds majority vote in favor of the ballot measure. The resolution declaring election results and directing the recording of notice of special tax lien shall be adopted.
Was that resolution, and then after that, it would be the first reading of the ordinance?
Oh, wait a minute. For the ordinance, do I have to read the ordinance? Just by title. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, levying special taxes within the city of Riverbank's Community Facility District Number 2016-1, Public Services. Now you may.
Can I make a question to accept the ordinance?
I'll second.
Introduce. Introduce. We, we have an introduction to, of the ordinance of Community Facility District Number 2016-1, Public Services, and a second.
And, and accept the vote.
Council 30 member Cruz.
Yes.
Council 30 member Campbell.
Yes.
Council 30 member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Are we done?
You're done?
We're done twice.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm just filling in.
Item 5.2, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, authorizing the first public hearing for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Notice of Funding Available NOFA cycle.
And Ms. Melissa Holdaway is going to present this item for city council's consideration this evening, and Melissa is the senior administrative analyst for the Local Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I bring forth the notice of funding availability that's come to our attention for May 17th. The 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program is a CDBG program, and this is their first public hearing. NOFA details, the NOFA was released on May 17th. The approximate availability of funds is 27 million. The city of Riverbank can apply for up to 2 million for all activities except an over-the-counter grant, which is a standalone application, not to exceed 3 million. The first public hearing is a requirement through CDBG to allow citizen participation when the city is contemplating applying for CDBG funds and provide input about the possible use of those funds. A second public hearing is anticipated for June 24th, 2016, to describe the proposed activities in the application if one is going to be submitted, and also to approve the submittal of an over-the-counter grant application. Eligible activities include the over-the-counter grant, housing assistance, rehabilitation acquisition, infrastructure and infrastructure in support of housing, public facilities, public services, planning and technical assistance, economic development, business assistance, microenterprise assistance. Requirements: The city must meet one of the following national objectives: benefit to low, moderate income persons, or prevention or elimination of slums and blight. The city must also have expended at least 50% of an open grant, and this requirement does not apply to the OTC grant. The recommendation tonight is city staff recommends the city council to open a public hearing for solicitation, for solicitation of public input during the design phase and provide feedback on any possible projects or programs that you would like to consider for inclusion in a possible grant application this fiscal year. The Local Redevelopment Authority is preparing to apply for an over-the-counter grant and will be brought back during the second public hearing.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the public, is there any comments? Saying none. This is a public hearing. For input to any of the available monies for the block grant notice? Saying none. I will close the open hearing and bring it back. On this, we, we're just going to hold it over till next month on the 24th, correct? Have to accept a public hearing?
Yeah, the first public hearing, and then the second hearing will be on June 24th, or 28th, I think, 28th.
I make a motion that we approve item 5.2.
I second.
A motion to approve item 5.2 in a second.
Council 30 member Cruz.
Yes.
Council 30 member Campbell.
Yes.
Council 30 member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Item 6.1, approval to award the zoning code update project to J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning.
Yes, and Mayor, members of city council, Donna Kinney, the city's planning and building manager, will provide an overview of this process for your consideration. You got a little preview of that last night at the budget workshop, so we'll, this will bring the, this will bring the public into the, into the discussion.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Some background, during the strategic planning session that we held on April 2nd, the city council suggested underneath the three-year goal of enhanced professionalism and customer service, that staff would provide an update on the status of the zoning code update, including the cost, by June 1st of this year. In order to accomplish this request, staff sent, this objective, staff sent out a request for proposals to nine consulting firms and received three proposals by the May 6th deadline. Per the RFP, a select committee made up of the planning and building manager, development services administrator, and senior community development specialist reviewed and analyzed the proposals. All three consultants provided excellent proposals that met the requirements of the Financial impact, these are the costs that came across. J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning at $135,000, Mintier Harnish Planning Consultants at $257,000, and Lisa Wise Consulting at $265,000. You'll notice there's quite a gap between the first and the second and third. The J.B. Anderson proposal, the project kickoff and background research was substantially less. Staff attributes that to his knowledge of the city and of our documents, and so the review period for those documents and putting together the background was significantly less time. In addition, as we analyze these proposals, the bulk of the hours for the J.B. Anderson proposal was with assistant and associate planner level work. The others, the costs were substantially higher because more hours were attributed to the principal planner or a planning manager. J.B. Anderson also showed less cost for meeting attendance, lower administrative expenses, did not add on a 10% contingency like another consultant did, and J.B. Anderson was the only consultant to offer grant administration and to submit a grant to pay for the, the cost of the zoning code update. So J.B. Anderson's land use planning's proposal was selected by the committee based on the scope of the work, their proposed budget, and their expedient and exemplary completion of past projects for the city. Staff recommends contracting with J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning for the comprehensive zoning code update when $135,000 in funding is secured for the 2016, 2017 budget. So basically, this exercise was to get the, the number for you to look forward to this next budget and plan accordingly, and hopefully we'll be able to get some grants to cover most, if not all, of the project. There is no resolution to vote on at this time.
Right.
Thank you.
See that. Are there any questions or comments of Donna? So any comments or questions from the public on this item? Bring it back. Appreciate J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning and their past work and their abilities to keep their costs low and their work quality exceptionally high. So I bring it to the council for recommendation on item 6.1.
I move that we approve the award to J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning for.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 when the funding becomes available, and a second.
Council 30 member Cruz.
Yes.
Council 30 member Campbell.
Yes.
Council 30 member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Now we switch hats. Item 6.2, Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority Agenda Item.
Mayor, members of the city council, again, we have Melissa Holdaway who will present an overview of the third quarter budget report for the Local Redevelopment Authority.
Good evening, chair and authority members. Tonight I'll bring you the third quarter budget for the fiscal year 2015-16. Fund 197 revenue, which is the leasehold revenue, $537,000 came in that quarter. We anticipate a little more, but with the conversion with the software program, we're going to be capturing that for year-end, so you'll see that in the next, in the year-end budget that I present at the end of the year. Fund 197 administrative expenses, the majority of these expenses are the 10% match that's for the OEA grant. As a reminder, that OEA grant, we will no longer have funding from them after this year. Legal is representative of, legal that we've had to pay through the leasehold that doesn't get covered by the OEA grant, so there is some legal there from that. Fund 197 facility expenditures pretty much stayed as to par. I mean, we didn't see anything outstanding this quarter. The fiscal year-end, we will see significant changes because there are bills that come through at the end of the year, so you'll see, for example, our insurance and any remaining PM schedules that are finishing up by June 30. Yes. Yes. Okay, that fire assessment fee, we just add it to the budget. It is for, if we were to have our clean properties transferred, that's what the average is for the fire assessment fee that we have on those, the properties that have no development on them. And that has not happened yet. Fund 198 is the OEA grant. Third quarter, we've had $80,000 expended, and we will be getting that returned to us through the OEA grant once we submit the cash request. Our statement of revenue expenditures for third quarter, we had revenue of $617,000, total expenditures of $561,000, leaving us net revenue expenditures $56,000. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Is there any questions from the public on this item? Thank you. Bring it back. We accept the report. There's some movement on the, for, by consolidated and by the Army Corps of Engineers to start looking at paying our assessments to consolidated. Have we determined what that cost would be and how we would approach it?
We do not have a, a specific cost for that. That is something that we need to, to revisit based on, on feedback from the, from BRAC.
Right, I would like to meet with the person in charge of both BRAC and Army Corps that were working with us. I'd like to do that. If I have to go to DC, it'll be on my own dime, and I like to do it as soon as possible.
We will work to schedule that, that meeting for you, mayor.
All right, now we get to go to the fun part. Staff comments.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to start staff comments tonight with some sad news from Sue Fitzpatrick. It's a follow-up to a discussion last night.
Oh, no. Is this a burial at sea?
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, the crew did try to get the pool heater repaired, but found that it is done. It's obsolete. It's irreparable at this point. So we did get a, an updated cost estimate, and it's $32,000, and that's with installation and purchase of the filter, of the pool heater. So we have a couple options. We can either use the thermal blanket, which we do, try to keep it as warm as we can. They, they do work pretty well, but for swim lessons, it will be a little chilly for the, for the little ones. Swim team will be fine, but the swim lessons will be affected unless we have really warm weather and we can keep it at a good temperature, so.
Did you talk with Marcella on, on funding? If there's a.
No, I, I didn't have a chance to even, probably Marcella doesn't, we haven't talked yet. Yeah, so.
Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I wanted to get the quote, and I just got it right before the meeting, so now we know the number. Okay.
So for those that may not have watched the budget workshop last night, this is something we did talk about. And Sue, is it my recollection that the pool heater is 17 years old? Is that correct?
Yes, it will be 17 years old this summer.
We have definitely got our money's worth out of, out of the equipment. However, we were hoping to go 18.
There's only, there's only one more surviving filter system, and it, it is on its last day as well, so, of that type, so.
What is the temperature of the pool right now? I know you fired it up.
Right, right now, it's about 77 degrees.
So that's within, that's acceptable. Within a degree of.
It is for, for recreational swimming, like the field trips we're having right now, and for pool rentals, it's fine. It's when you're standing trying to teach little ones to swim that it's harder, it's more difficult. But it's doable. When I was a lifeguard swim instructor, we didn't have a heated pool, but it, we've gotten used to it, the, the parents have gotten used to it. We've always had a heated pool, so it would be a transition to, to go that direction. But if we have to, we do have, at least we do have the thermal blanket. That was a very good purchase because it does help a lot, and it helps retain the chemicals as well.
Thank you.
Michael Raddell will provide an overview of some news from the water board that hit, that hit the newspapers last, last week.
So on May 18th, the water board went back and took a look at the proclamation by the governor and the emergency regulations that were standing at that time and the conservation measures that were enforced. What they decided at that point in time was to, rather than have the state set the conservation numbers, they've now put it into the water purveyors area to do so. So in essence, what the state is telling us is that we have to certify to them the amount of water that we have available to them, and we have to take a look at if the drought were to continue for another three years to be able to make sure that we can serve. This is not something that I will be able to do, so I have already been in contact with a consultant to talk to them about it, being Neil Caldwell at KSN, about what we need to do this because it has to happen rather quickly. June 22nd is the deadline. June 22 is the deadline on this. I did have a discussion with the Office of Enforcement about our conservation order and where we were going to land with that, and what I was told is that if we do certify with them, and they then will consider lifting the conservation order. I think at this point, it will depend on what we tell them or come up with, what we certify as our conservation percentage. So that will remain to be seen.
One of the issues I have is with the 2013 numbers. Is there a way that we could go from 2011 to 2014 for a consolidated monthly average and reduce from there?
I think we'll be able to do something in that accord, Mayor, because basically what they're telling us that we need to do is tell them how much water we have available to us and if we're going to have a shortfall.
Well, that's not, but we still have to do the conservation part.
That's correct. So we're going to have to come up with some kind of number. Now, I went to Neil with this because Neil has done this on a couple of occasions already. He did it for the City of Woodland, which was part of their requirement when they got into an issue. So they have guidance, there is a guidance, a fact sheet out from the state telling you how to go about this. It's been my experience, when you're to certify something to the state or to the water board or the Regional Water Quality Control Board, it needs a PE stamp on it. If it doesn't have an engineer's stamp, then they typically don't accept it. Plus, he has the expertise for this, so I think using him will enable us to come up with a good number that the state will accept because that's, in fact, where it's going to land, whether the state will accept what we tell them.
Then determine what percentage we need to conserve.
Yes, sir.
And then finally, I did want to let the council know that the city's request for an MSR, SOI, or Municipal Service Review and Speaker of Influence update will go before the LAFCO board tomorrow night. We have been receiving some questions from residents who became aware of this process either through a notice from LAFCO that went to all of the property owners that were impacted by the potential change and also by some comments in regards to the Modesto B article. In addition to that, later, earlier today, we did receive a letter from LAFCO staff indicating the City of Modesto's concerns. So I just want to let the council know that that is going before the public tomorrow night. I expect that there will be some media on it, and that if anybody listening tonight has some questions for us, we'll be happy to address those as quickly as we possibly can, in advance of tomorrow night's meeting, as well as any time after that.
Council comments. Councilmember Jones Cruz.
I got to attend the Historical Society omelet breakfast. It was delicious and well-attended. Thank the Historical Society for me. Would you please, Councilmember Campbell?
I would do that.
I also wanted to just let you folks know, and for the folks that are out there, that we are expecting some warm weather and this time of the year. The river is still very cold with the runoff, and I wanted to make sure and announce that the fire department still and does continually, continue to have their free life jacket program. So if you've got folks that are going to be visiting the rivers in the local area, be sure that to have your kids in some life jackets, and you can get free ones, loners from the fire department right down the street. Please be safe, all right? Especially early in the season, it's very dangerous out there. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I'd like to encourage the public to attend the farmer's market on Wednesday evenings from 5 to 8 o'clock. In June, they'll start showing a children's appropriate movie at the end of each farmer's market, which is a lot of fun. People can get out there, bring their own food and whatnot, have a good time. And there'll be activities going on at different times all throughout the summer on these Wednesday night activities. So stop by and take a look.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Just wanted to let everyone know that on June 15th, we will have our Senior Vouchers Health and Safety Fair, which means that the vouchers will be given out to our senior citizens, and they're able to spend those vouchers on fruits and vegetables. And then also on July 6th, we will have our bicycle, rodeo, and health and safety fair for our kids in the community. So I'm working with my friend, Chief Kylie, and we're expecting a lot of people to come out to the event, so spread the word and come on out and have a good time. And it's going to be at the community center during the farmer's market, both events from 5 to 8. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Everyone stole my thunder already tonight, from the omelet breakfast to the life vests to the, to everything else. So I'll just say that I'll steal your thunder a little bit and say I hope to see everybody out for our Memorial Day recognition on Monday, on Memorial Day, at this community center at 11:30.
11:30.
Very good. That's it for me.
We, Ms. McRitchie brought up the homeless issue. We're working with the county on prevention and services for the homeless. We need to be a little bit more aggressive with them, or they need to be more aggressive so we can have more resolutions in resolving how we deal with the homeless and how they're cared for. Just kicking them out of an area and having them move somewhere else does not solve the issue. All it does is move it around. So if you, if we have some upcoming meetings, we need to know about them. I haven't heard of any.
I'm not aware of any upcoming meeting on the homeless initiative for focus. It's a part of the focus on prevention plan. Certainly let you know if there's anything that comes, comes our way.
As I stated earlier, I'd like to start moving the LRA towards the acceptance of the MOU, talking with it, not exactly tomorrow, but start the process on it. I know we talked about an RFP for some transition from our position through to a new ownership in the future, and I would like to start that, see what we can garner in the next couple of months with that. Just start it. Not, I know it won't be resolved, it'd be years before it's resolved, but I'd like to have that started as, you know, so I have some type of a plan when I go talk to the bosses. Monday is Memorial Day, and we will have an observance at 11:30 to last no more than a half an hour. I invite everyone to participate, especially those who are in the military or have been in the military. We all have our experiences with those who have sacrificed, and we'd like to show our appreciation before we have the official first day of summer.
Mayor, thanks to O'Brien's Market. There will be some light breakfast refreshments available prior to the event starting, so, as well as afterwards, so feel free to come a little bit early and grab a cup of coffee and a few little refreshments.
And lastly, as was mentioned, the LAFCO is tomorrow night. I do anticipate a lot of comments against their growth, especially with individuals making comments of land grab, but we probably are the most orderly and the most carefully thought-out city to go before LAFCO, as stated by LAFCO staff. So I don't know what the board will do tomorrow, or the commission will do tomorrow, but we'll see if we have a lot more work to do. Okay, with that, we move to closed session, consisting of LRA Item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8, Property APN 062-008-009-062-031-005, Agency Negotiator Jill Anderson, City Manager, and Debbie Olson, LRA Executive Director. Property Negotiator, U.S. Army, Under Negotiation Price, Terms of Payment, or Both. Item 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Agency Representative Jill Anderson, City Manager, Unrepresentative Employee Organization Executive Management. Does anyone have any comments on any of these items before we go into closed session? Saying none, I adjourn this meeting to closed session. Item 9, Report from Closed Session, Item LRA Item 9.1, Report on Closed Session LRA Item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, Report from Closed Session, Item 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Unrepresented Executive Management. Again, direction has been provided with staff. With that, we adjourn. Our next regular meeting is June 14th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Council.
And on Friday, do I meet with the Del Rio owner?
I believe that is on the calendar.
At 10:00?